Uh, six twenty-nine, I have Lori is on her way. Is she, is she there yet?
No.
Okay. Okay, I want to just give her one minute because I've got two different, different blocks here. And then we'll begin with call to honor and roll call, and then pledge allegiance, and then I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Leslie. I think, um, is Mary on? Mary had an appointment. Okay, it's six thirty, I'm going to begin. Um, Sue Stolty Marlborough.
Sue Stolty Marlborough.
Carrie. Carrie, here. Okay, um, Mary. Okay. Lori. Eric. Okay. Lily. Lily Chichuk.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi Lily.
Hi.
Rowan.
Rowan is not present.
Jessica.
Here, Jessica from Hebron, thank you.
Mike Morris.
Yep, Mike Morris from Hebron.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Sharon from Hebron.
Abe.
Abe Marks from Hebron.
And Joe.
Joe from Hebron.
Okay, please stand for the national, for the, um, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
With liberty and justice.
Liberty and justice.
Let's try to say that.
Um, Superintendent Leslie, I have just two minutes, Mike, so let's turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you, thank you Judy. Um, so the meeting is being handed over to me just for this one agenda item, which is the, um, election of officers. Um, and just, I'll take just a minute to review, um, what you can expect over the next few minutes. Um, we have four officer positions to be filled, Board Chair, the Board Vice Chair, the Secretary, Board Secretary, and Board Treasurer. Um, we'll begin with the Board Chair, and for each position, um, I'll call for nominations. Nominations do not need to be seconded, but you're more than welcome to second any nomination that is made. Once, um, all nominations are brought forward, um, I'll then open it up for discussion. In which, of course, you're welcome to, um, support, um, your nominee. Um, once our discussion is over, we will do a, um, a roll call voice vote. So we'll begin with whichever name was nominated first for, um, that particular position, and we'll do the voice vote on that. Um, it'll take a majority for an individual to win, so if, um, the first nominee receives a majority of votes, then we would stop at that point, and that person would be the, um, that would have that position. If the first nominee does not receive a majority, then we go to the second nominee. So I will, we'll begin with the Board Chair, and I'll open the floor for nominations for Board Chair.
Hi Scott, this is Jessica, I'd like to nominate Mike Morris for Chair.
Are there other nominations for Chair? Hearing no more nominations, I'll open up the floor for discussion.
I, I, I ended up nominating Mike, I'm just getting to have known him on the board, he asks good questions, um, he's got, uh, easy temperament, um, I think he definitely listens to all of us, respects everybody's input and decisions, so I just feel like he would be a leader that will help kind of take us into the direction that we need to, to support our students, support the staff, and also work on the budget in a cohesive way.
Jessica, I'm gonna need you to talk to my wife.
Not a problem.
Any other? Lori, we, we just took nominations, we have, um, Mike nominated as Board Chair, and we're, uh, going to open for discussion. Hearing no further discussion, I'll close the floor for discussion, and we'll do a roll call voice vote. Judy? And then, and I, I'd ask you to vote either, you know, no or yes, no in the affirmative, uh, I'm sorry, yes in the affirmative, no.
Scott, you and I, you and I spoke about this as my last official role as Chair, I'm, um, following Robert's role, so I'm going to name myself.
Okay. Jessica?
Yes.
Sue?
No confidence.
Lori? Mike, Chair?
Yes.
Joe Clay?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Morris?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
So the yeses, the yeses have it, Mike, congratulations.
Thank you everybody very much, I appreciate it, and I will do my best to do a good job of managing the administrative and the organizational stuff so the board can focus on things that matter.
Great, thank you very much, thank you Mike. Mike, if it's okay if you all continue through the votes, just because I've got the ballots in front of me, and then I'll hand it over to.
Yes, for you.
For public comment?
Great.
Great, so we're, could you consider the position of Vice Chair? I'll call for any nominations, Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Judy Benson-Bark, please.
Are there any other nominees? Hearing no further nominees, I'll open up for discussion. Hearing no discussion. We'll do the, um, roll call voice vote, Judy?
Scott, I'm, I'm choosing not to, um, vote.
Sure.
Even though I'm not Chair, thanks.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Lori? Mike Sharon?
Yes.
And I'm assuming Mary Kachowski has not joined us? Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yeah, wait, yeah, you're gone, by the way.
Oh, is that Mary?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary.
That's okay, yeah.
And how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and Carrie?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Morris?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
You have a unanimous vote, Judy, congratulations.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I'll call for nominations for Secretary, Board of Education.
Scott, may, or, um, Scott and Chairman, um, Morris, may, may I ask a question for clarification right now?
Sure.
Can, um, can a candidate, um, nominate themselves, because I, these positions take time, and I would love for it to be someone who would want to do it, and, um, I, I thought that you read us something, um, Superintendent Leslie, that, that someone could nominate themselves.
That is correct. Yep, so for Secretary, you're free to nominate another Board Member or nominate yourselves. Any nominations?
Is it, um, Scott, is it possible to ask if anyone's uninterested? And maybe doesn't want to nominate, but I mean, if someone's interested, I'll nominate them whoever they are.
Absolutely, and avoid volunteers, I, I'm going to, I am in, I'm, I'm, Mike Sharon?
Okay.
So we have one nomination. Any other nominations? I'll open the floor for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, I'll close the floor for discussion, and we'll do the roll call voice vote. So for Mike Sharon for Secretary, Judy, are you going to say it again?
Yes, I'm now voting yes, thank you.
Jessica?
Yes, and thank you, Mike.
Sue?
Yes.
Lori? Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Morris?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for volunteering.
Eric? Okay, we have another unanimous vote. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mike, congratulations. And for the last position, the Treasurer, Board of Ed, do we have any nominations, whether they be for another member or, um, for oneself, for Treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Lori.
And Jessica, that was, am I correct, Jessica, that was you not ma- making the nomination?
Yes, oh yeah, sorry, should've been more specific, correct, yeah, just gonna nominate Lori Blake.
Do you accept the nomination?
Accept.
Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? I'll open up the floor for discussion. Hearing no discussion, we'll go to a vote. Judy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Lori? Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Morris?
Yes, thanks again for volunteering.
Eric?
Yes.
We have unanimous, congratulations Lori. So, thank you very much, um, our new Chair is Mike Morris, congratulations Mike. Our new Vice Chair is Judy, Judy, congratulations, I should say, our returning Vice Chair, since Judy currently, uh, continues to dismount that position. Our Secretary is Mike Sharon, and our Treasurer is Lori Cole, congratulations to each of you. And Mike, as Chair, I will pass the agenda over to you, but I'm certainly happy to help out and assist in any way I can as we move through the meeting.
Great, thanks, as the, uh, the novice here, I'm gonna lean on you on that. Um, so I, I think, one of the things I read was that we needed to ensure that we have a timekeeper, is that somebody that's already been appointed?
Um, we do not have an appointed timekeeper at this, at this moment, so we need someone to volunteer to be the timekeeper.
Really, and if I'm, to be, to be clear, I think the majority of it is just to keep us on time, and also, as we go into public comments, to monitor, to make sure that we provide these in three minutes, is that right, Scott?
Correct, yep. Dave vol- I think Dave's, yeah, Dave, Dave volunteered, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so, uh, elections being done, public comments. This one, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dave, do you have a question?
Uh, do you have, like, a writing pencil I could use?
Absolutely. Mike, I'll, I'll be happy to read the description for public comments, if that's helpful. Hebron, Andover, Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at Board of Ed Public Meetings is Welcome. The Public Comment Segment of the Meeting Agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Proceeds really, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. I'll open the floor for public comment.
I'm a little overforced, I might cut it on the fly, um, I'll do my best, but, hello, my name is Amanda Chester, I'm a parent, resident, and a physics teacher within the Ram Learning Community. I have two topics that I would like to discuss with you, but first, I'd like to congratulate our newest members for their recent appointments to the Board, and I'd like to thank the current members for all they have been doing for our learning community. The first topic I'd like to discuss is the C I A C Winter Sports Policy. I know this will be an agenda item tonight, and I thank you for considering this important issue. I'm here to stand in opposition to this policy and hopefully inspire you to stand against the discrimination, unequal playing fields, and two-class system that this policy will be creating. This policy not only discriminates against the private medical decisions of athletes and of families, it is not based on the current COVID science. I sent an email to all the Board Members with five different scientific studies that show there are no statistical differences in the Delta variant viral loads and transmission rates between the vaccinated and unvaccinated. In addition to these studies, I've also included two studies showing the Omicron variant is evading vaccine-induced immune response, in both the fully vaccinated and those with boosters. Based on the science provided, this policy seems to be a political tool to coerce vaccinations in our unvaccinated athletes. Politics such as this should not be allowed in our school system. My call to action is this. If the Board decides to not follow the winter sports policy, I ask that you make a public announcement of your opposition, much like the Ellington, and now the Vernon Board of Ed has done. I've included their oppositional letters in my email to you. I feel that silent opposition is not enough justice for the discrimination, um, and that if districts across the state stand together, this policy will indeed be repealed. There's a famous bumper sticker quote that speaks to this, and it says, "If the people lead, the leaders will follow." We can't move backwards in time and allow regressive discriminatory policy to infiltrate our school system. The second topic I'd like to address is the Screen and Stay policy. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Leslie and his colleagues who advocated to get the Screen and Stay policy in place, uh, to ensure equality within the quarantine parameters or policy. My original intent was to speak about the policy and the parameters laid within it, and how they are not good enough, and they're not keeping all kids in school. However, I'm hearing that this policy will be eliminated, as it was only meant to be short-term, but before the respiratory season kicks in. My call to action of the Ram Board is to not only advocate to keep the Screen and Stay policy in place, but also encourage the state to revise the policy in order to eliminate the lingering inequalities within it. A quick example of the remaining inequity within the policy is being in close contact during March. In these cases, the unvaccinated need quarantine while the vaccinated period is not. I think we need to challenge the state for data that shows that the secondary attack rate is for the healthy, unvaccinated quarantine student. Anecdotal data of Ram students is showing that essentially none of these kids are getting COVID, and therefore being quarantined unnecessarily, and falling behind in school. Moreover, when looking at the Ram COVID dashboard, our data is showing a two-to-one ratio of healthy to sick kids being quarantined. So sixty-six percent of our quarantined kids are healthy and not sick. So it would be great if we could maybe collect some real data on that and bring that to the state, but I don't want to over, overburden our administration and our nursing staff, who are doing tremendous work on collecting and doing contact tracing. So just my last sentence, remember when considering the data I shared with you, vaccinated students have a relevant and equal role in transmission as the unvaccinated do. Science is on your side. We need to advocate for bad, bad-based policy over scientifically unsound and discriminatory policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there additional public comments? And Mike, I think we're, we're set with public comments at this point.
Okay, uh, do we move on to, um, any additional or, uh, leap of any agenda items? Okay, no discussion, and I think we can move on. Student representative report, do we have a student representative this week, Scott?
We do, Lily Chichenko is here.
Uh, greetings everyone, new Board Members, welcome, it's nice to meet all of you. Um, I'm Lily Chichenko, I'm a senior here at Ram. Um, I'm also an athlete, as well as, um, a gr- uh, student in the music program, so I have a pretty, um, pretty wide range of interests here at Ram, so we have, I can do a valid job of reporting the student interests. But first here, I just wanted to bring up was that winter sports have started, uh, like, who's basketball for those boys, wrestling, chelsa coed, indoor track, just coed, and competition, cheerleading. Um, and so we're all just dealing with the side having to wear masks, or the outside needing to take them off. Um, and then of course, there's the problem of transmission, where, um, vaccinated kids versus unvaccinated, close to quarantine. Um, and then, in terms of twelve periods specifically, people are getting into colleges now, most of the early action, um, decisions are coming back, so people are seeing if they're, uh, accepted, rejected, deferred, or waitlisted. Um, for some people, um, they're even committing to college, but some people right now don't know where they're going, which is awesome, I'm really accepting. Um, and for others, um, it's time to start applying now. Many of the application deadlines for regular decision are in January, like, January, the, since, very early January is now, starting to really buckle down on writing those essays, getting those resumes, and finalizing those prescriptions. This week specifically, we have the, um, three and a half day meet, we can get out early on Thursday, and we had something, I think, that we've never done before in my Ram career, anyway, and it was a, like, a student-led, um, spirit week, where the student council took, um, student input from what they wanted to see for the spirit week, and there was a big little march, and we all voted on it, and I think all the students really enjoyed that. Gave us a chance to really do what we wanted within, and I think everyone's pretty satisfied. Today was Adam Sandler Day, um, tomorrow is Dynamic Duo, Wednesday is Formal, like, Christmas casual, and, um, and Thursday is Happy Holiday, which will be super fun. And we're also trying to increase spirit at games during volleyball season, we had a lot of school spirit, and I think our basketball, we're trying to do the same thing. We're trying to leave, um, student-led, like, section dress-ups for home and away games, and I think that's all going really well, I think everyone's being safe with their masks. Um, and so I think it's overall just gonna be a great winter, it's quite the contrast from last year, and I think it'll be really fun going into the colder months, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, that being said, uh, the Board of Ed Chair Report. The only thing I would say is just, uh, congrat- uh, welcome, welcome to the new Board Members, congratulations on your election. Uh, appreciate you being here and stepping up, uh, to join the rest of these awesome volunteers that are here to cop up a Monday night every weekend and put in all the time in the facility and the subcommittees, which is really where I think a lot of the true work gets done, so appreciate having you here, appreciate you volunteering, and, uh, look forward to all that you do to, uh, to make us better.
Great, thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Reporting to Superintendent?
Mike, thank you, and again, I'd like to extend my welcome, Joe, Mike, Dave, Carrie, thank you so much for joining us. Congratulations on attending your first meeting as a role of a Ram Board of Ed Member, and we, we really are all so grateful that you're volunteering your time to support our students, the families, and our staff, and, uh, that means we're all for stuff. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Um, I, I'd like to, to take a minute, um, certainly it's timely, because certainly in the public comment, we had some mentions of the Screen and Stay, um, policy, and I thought I would just spend a minute to kind of update people where we are, why we're where we are, and where I think we might be going on this. For those of you who are not familiar with Screen and Stay, um, you may have heard recently that the CDC approved, um, test and stay. And originally, test and stay was, was what was being, um, advocated for schools that would allow us to, to avoid having to quarantine students who aren't vaccinated. And so the idea of test and stay is that, um, if a student who's not vaccinated is exposed to a student who is, uh, positive for COVID, but if that student is asymptomatic, if they tested every few days, we could, you know, they'd be able to remain in school. The state of Connecticut recognized that that was probably overburdensome for schools to, to be able to test students that frequently. Um, and as any of you who have been looking for tests recently may have found, they're just simply not available. So, the state modified it to Screen and Stay, and so, for the state of Connecticut, Screen and Stay allows us to, um, as, as we contact trace if we have positive cases within the building, um, no problem there. If we have prob- uh, positive cases in the building, um, and a student who is not vaccinated is exposed, um, to a student who's positive in a classroom setting, as long as the student and their family agree to screen the student each morning for COVID symptoms, and if they remain symptoms-free, they're able to avoid quarantine, and they can continue in school. The, you know, certainly the, the area of frustration that we hear most from families is that Screen and Stay is limited to, in classroom settings, where masks are properly worn. Um, Screen and Stay is, is not a viable option for athletics, after-school activities, um, exposure at home or outside of school, so it's been a tremendous hope to us to ensure that more students are able to stay in school, and I should preface this by sharing that our goal is to try to keep as many students as possible here in school. It's not perfect for those students who aren't vaccinated, because there are many instances where it doesn't come into play, and they may still, um, be required for quarantine. With Screen and Stay, the only choice that we had was whether we adopted it or not, not, you know, we don't have the ability to go in and modify any of the elements of any of the guidance and directives from the State Department of Health and Department of Ed. We chose to adopt it so that we could, um, increase or decrease the number of students that would have to quarantine. Now, having said all this, when Screen and Stay was originally put in place in November, um, the, the title of the document is Options for Temporary Relief from Students and Staff. the title of the document is Options for Temporary Relief from Students and Staff Quarantines. And in the document itself, it indicates that it's in place for the remainder of the fall 2021 semester. Now, any of us in this room who are thinking middle and high school, fall 21 semester doesn't really ring true to us, the State Department of Health was mixing things up a bit with the college schedule, where they do have the fall and spring semesters. So the intent of screen and stay originally was that it would be in place through the end, through the end of this week, December twenty-third, and then they would reassess it following that. I have no inside scoop on what the state is gonna be telling us this week, whether screen and stay itself will be extended, whether test and stay will be adopted, whether screen and stay will be eliminated, or if it remains, if it will be modified so that it opens up additional opportunities for students to be able to avoid the quarantine. We meet every Tuesday, I say week, there's a meeting for superintendents and administrators every Tuesday morning with the Department of Health, Department of Education. I would anticipate that we'll learn something tomorrow. I believe the governor is doing a press conference tomorrow, so we'll likely learn what is in store after this, or after tomorrow. In regards to the testing, I did learn today that the state government is looking to dramatically increase testing opportunities in each community. So right now, Ram is, we host a testing site on Saturdays for a few hours. We're being asked, would we be able to host a test site unveiling every afternoon and every weekend? So, you know, we're anticipating that there'll be a significant uptick in testing availability more than likely after the winter break, but, so, you know, for screen and stay, I don't know if it's being sunset, we don't know if it's being modified, we don't know if there'll be a new version of it brought forth after the break. You know, I will say that by adopting it, we have been able to minimize the number of, or I should say reduce the number of students that have had to quarantine, so in that case, I think it's a really, you know, a really positive sign as well. I will obviously keep everyone posted, you know, I give the board an update each week, and the middle and high schools send updates to families each week, so certainly whatever we learn this week, we share with everybody, so if anyone has a date with where it's going.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, consent agenda approval of the minutes of the meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, it's enclosure nine point one. So I need a...
We need a motion to approve the minutes. Lori, Mike made the motion, we have someone to second that motion?
This is Jessica, I'll second.
All right, minutes having been approved, move on to old business?
One sec, Mike, we'll just have to ask if there's any discussion.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize that, okay.
Can I, can I, can we vote too, maybe?
Yes, then we need to vote on that, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy. Any discussion on the events from last meeting?
Mike, I have the names listed in front of me, do you want me to just do the roll call vote?
Please, if you could.
Sure. Okay, here are no discussion on the minutes. For our new board members, you can abstain from voting, since you weren't here, and you might not have, maybe you watched, and maybe you heard, but, you know, if there's any item that we're voting on that you don't feel you have enough information to be able to make an educated decision on, or if you work here, then abstaining is certainly a fine. There you go. So for the minutes, Judy?
Yes, approved.
Jessica?
Yes.
Sue? Lori?
Scott, I believe she had to go, she emailed you and I.
Okay. Lori? Mike Chair?
Abstain.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Abstain.
Karen?
Abstain.
Dave?
Abstain.
Mike Morris?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And the consent agenda is approved, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business, does it look like we have anything on the agenda for old business? I'm assuming we can just move on, or do we need to do something compared to that?
We can move on to new business.
Okay. All right, so the first item on the new business agenda is the discussion and possible action on the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar, and essentially we have the proposed calendar, which is enclosure eleven point one.
Right, and Eric, can you put the calendar on the screen, please? So obviously, one of the tasks of Board of Education is to consider and approve a school calendar. What you see in your packet and what you see on the screen here is the proposed calendar for the twenty-two, twenty-three academic school year. I can tell you that this calendar was created in consultation and work with our local districts. So, and over at Hebron-Marlborough, we share the same vacations, we share the same, many of the same professional days. We also try to align it with some of our other local schools, because we know we have families that, you know, maybe worked in some local school districts, and it can always be a challenge if you have a vacation one week at Ram and a vacation on a different week in another district. Basically, what you're looking at here is a school start date for Ram on September first, two thousand twenty-two. The only difference there from some of the elementary schools is that they're starting on the third first. They have two professional days prior to beginning of the school, they have three, that's start a day later. The last day of school would be on June thirteenth, which is, again, consistent with the other districts. This includes six staff development days, so those are, would be days off for students during the school year, but days in which the staff is here for professional development. And there are nine early release professional development days built into that calendar as well. So I think as far as a school calendar goes, you know, this obviously fulfills the need for a hundred days of school days, it fulfills the contractual needs for requisite professional development days, and the vacations and professional development days are coordinated with our local elementary districts. So happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, but as calendars go, it's pretty straightforward. Not a lot of, rather than all, a calendar that's a lot, the other calendars in the districts. I think, Mike, hearing your questions, you could ask for a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar?
Yeah, sorry, I was talking myself of you, yes. So no discussion, no questions, is there a nomination?
I make a motion to accept the twenty-two, twenty-three calendar as presented.
I'll second that motion. Mike Chair? Any discussion? Okay, we'll do the local voice vote. Judy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lori? Mike Chair?
Yes.
Mary? Joe?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Okay. The next document, Eric, the board meeting dates on the screen. At the January, I'm sorry, the December meeting each year, the board reviews and approves the meeting dates moving forward, and basically what you see, again, is pretty consistent with every other year that we review this. The Ram Board of Ed meetings are traditionally held the third Monday of the month. As you look at this list, you'll see that the vast majority of the regular meeting dates are, in fact, the third Monday of the month. The exceptions are January and February because of a holiday that falls on the third Monday of the month, so those are on the fourth Monday of the month. And then there's two additional meetings, there's a public hearing in April, and the budget meeting in May, which I'll be talking about in more detail in a few minutes, but I talked about the budget, the upcoming budget, but those are on the first Mondays of the month. So essentially, what this proposed meeting schedule does is it thrives forward, per schedule that Ram has always used, that seems to work fine, so. You'd ask for a motion to approve the meeting dates for two thousand twenty-two?
Motion to approve the region eight Board of Ed meeting schedule as proposed for twenty-two, twenty-three.
I second that.
Okay.
I should add that we're always free to add special meetings, and obviously, this doesn't include any of the subcommittee meetings, nor does it include the budget meetings, which are added during the budget season, which you'll learn more about in the next week as well.
No discussion, then maybe go through the roll call?
Okay. Judy?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
The one time I don't. Joe?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Morris?
Yes, now on, Mike's around this person.
And Eric?
Yes, let me clarify the picture here, there's, there are bars on the subcommittee, you can show me.
That's on the next item.
Okay.
Flip your page backward, and you'll see where the list, there you go, yep, yep.
All right, I'm with him.
So, Mike, the next item is really an informational calendar for you, in that, what the next item does is I remove the early release days and many of the days that really don't impact when board meetings take place. And what I tried to do here is highlight moving forward when the subcommittees are currently scheduled to meet, and when the board meetings will take place, and you'll see they're color-coded. There's no need to vote on this particular calendar at this point, this is really more for informational purposes. Mike, one of the things that you'll need to do is appoint members to subcommittees, and then once everyone's been appointed to a subcommittee, we'll be able to revisit this just to make sure the subcommittee's schedule works for everybody that's sitting on each of those subcommittees. So I really presented this more as a, as you're thinking about subcommittees, as you're looking at the rest of the year, you can get a sense of when some of those important meetings will be taking place moving forward. You'll notice that for our new members, that program and finance subcommittees are meeting on those days that are highlighted in green, those are two separate committees, they don't meet together, one meets at six-thirty and the other meets at eight o'clock. So when we have two subcommittees on the same evening, one is meeting earlier and the other one is meeting a little later. For the orange squares that represent facilities and policy, the facilities typically meet at six-thirty, and the policy meets at eight o'clock.
Thank you. Well, yeah, we looked at that first one, but, yeah.
Yeah, my OCD loves this, thank you very much. Okay, given that, the overview of items likely to impact the twenty-two, twenty-three FY budget, enclosure eleven point three.
Sure. So I'm gonna ask Eric, just to put the presentation, and I'll be sharing this presentation with the board members immediately following tonight's meeting, and we'll also put it up on the website. We have a new tab for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, so we'll begin to collect the documents that members of the public will be able to access and see as well. Can you do the presentation? So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm seeing the slides on the side, there you go, yeah, yeah. So just to kind of give you a preview of things, this is not my proposed budget, this is not anything close to my proposed budget, that's coming in January. So in January, I will have a proposed budget, which I'll be handing off to you as the board, and that will remain the superintendent's proposed budget until April, when the board adopts it as the Board of Education budget. And between my submission in January of the proposed budget to you adopting it in April, we will have had a fair number of meetings that will allow each of you to ask many questions, interact with our department coordinators, and, you know, get as much information as possible about what we're proposing, and then obviously, you will make your tweaks and develop the board proposal. What I'm doing tonight is really, I'm just giving you, here are some of the things that we're thinking about as we go into the process of developing the budget, and what are some of the drivers in the areas of savings and in the areas of expenses that we're all going to have to contend with. I suspect that, well, first of all, Ram bifurcates are operating at our capital budget, so there's actually two budgets that the board contains, one is the operating budget that keeps school running, the other is the capital budget that funds some of the more expensive capital projects, like air conditioning units and replacing flooring and this sort of thing, work ethic. So I'm going to, rather than giving you any figures at this point, I'm just gonna tell you, here are the challenges that I think we're going to be addressing, some of the, and opportunities that we'll be addressing over the next few months. So basically, I'm just simply starting with our policy, this is the board policy that requires the superintendent present to the board some of the overriding factors that would be impacting the budget as we lead through the budget process. And again, you'll have a copy of this, so you'll be able to go through everything in greater detail. Obviously, when we're developing the budget, we use the Region Eight Strategic Plan as our, as a guidepost. It's really on us to make sure that whatever budget we are presenting and discussing supports our strategic plan. Our strategic plan has been in place for a number of years, and I think we're in a good place in that it is set for review and renewal next year. So when the new superintendent takes office, it coincides with a review of the strategic plan, so I think that timing works out nicely with that. And within that strategic plan, some of the district commitments that I'm looking at closely as I'm developing the budget, so developing a fiscally efficient and accountable budget that maximizes resource, providing a welcoming, accepting, well-maintained, accessible and safe facility in school community, offering globally competitive, world-class education for all of our students, hiring, training, and retaining. for all of our students, hiring, training, and retaining high-quality professional staff, and engaging the community through active outreach and ongoing communication. The strategic plan has five goals. And because my eyesight is what it is, I'm going to read them in a short moment. First goal, all students in Region Eight will have access to and actively engage in a variety of learning opportunities where they experience growth, build skills, competencies, and dispositions, be successful in college, end or career, and as citizens in the changing world. Goal two, develop professional staff to promote a positive school climate. Goal three, develop budgets that address the declining enrollment of the district that are fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the school, families, and state. Goal four, develop and implement strategies to enhance and further develop a culture of safety, acceptance, pride, and support with students, families, staff, and community members, and goal five, enhance our facilities in order to support innovative and fully accessible teaching, learning, and extracurricular opportunities. So as you can see, there's a broad base that we're really focused on when we look at developing our budget. This first slide really is looking back in the past because it goes from October 6th through October, November 5th. And this just gives you an idea of the steps that we've been taking as we've begun the process of developing the budget and the individuals involved. So we have the department coordinators, we have the district leaders. We've been meeting since, well before October, but earnestly beginning in October, to review the needs of the district, to review the needs of our departments, to review the needs of our students as we go through the process of developing the budget. And Eric, if you go to the next page. This brings us up to tonight. So we have been reviewing our programming, we've been looking at our capital needs. And this brings us to, this evening, we are presenting new and major items. Go to the next slide, Eric. This gives you a picture of where we're going. So on January 6th, the finance subcommittee is scheduled to meet. We'll have an opportunity to talk to the members of the finance subcommittee, talk about, you know, some of the emphasis and where we're seeing the budget going. On January 24th, I'll be presenting, this is a regular board meeting, I'll be presenting my proposed budget. And then we have the next four Mondays as budget workshops. You'll notice that I have, on February 7th, I have Marlborough, and on February 14th, I have Andover. We historically held a budget meeting in Andover, in Marlborough, at the elementary school, and we've held one in Andover at the elementary school, trying to, you know, make sure that members from each of the three communities can attend at least one budget hearing without having to travel, you know, to town. Not knowing where we're going to be at that point, whether we're still going to be in a hybrid format, or whether we're going to be fully back in-person, or who knows? I kept those there. Those might change, obviously, depending on where we are at that point. Our last scheduled budget workshop is February 28th. Of course, we can add additional budget workshops. On April 4th, there's a public budget hearing in which I'll present the budget as it stands at that point. And then the board needs to adopt that budget at that point. Then on May 2nd, the board holds its annual budget meeting, which really is in effect sending the budget to referendum the next day. So I think that probably that the two most critical dates here are adopting a budget on April 4th, which gives you enough time from statutory standpoint to be able to send it to referendum on May 3rd. Considerations in developing this budget. Critical need to provide the resources necessary to continue to support student learning while addressing gaps in learning resulting from the pandemic. I'd love to say that the 22, 23 budget has the pandemic fully in the rearview mirror. And if, from a coming to school and masks and all that stuff, if that was all in the past, then we're going to be grateful. But even so, we still need to make sure that we're addressing any challenges that our students have, you know, been facing over the last couple of years, and ensuring that our teachers have the resources and tools that they need to make sure that, you know, they can help our students catch up with anything, or to emphasize those areas that some students may not be so strong in. The critical need to continue to support student emotional health. I don't think I need to tell anybody in this room that all this pandemic has had on anyone, regardless of who they are, but in particular our students, who we're responsible for. We want to make sure that we have the resources to support all of our students. Ensuring that all students have adequate opportunities to enroll in the increased number of electives necessary for graduation. The state mandated new graduation requirements, which have gone into effect, which require additional credits for graduation and additional electives for graduation. So we want to make sure that in moving forward with our budget and our schedule, that our students have ample opportunities to ensure that they have all of the electives that are necessary to satisfy the graduation requirements. And the need to continue to support progress in the maintenance upkeep of building school grounds. So these are the four key areas that we also look for in developing the budget. So as I said, not giving you numbers, but I'm giving you the items out there that are impacting our thinking and as we develop our budget. So if we look at enrollment, we're anticipating, right now, the way you can read this going across, this year in 2021, 22, the middle school is 380 students and the high school is 825 students. We're anticipating that going into next year, the middle school will see a decrease of approximately five students, and the high school will see a decrease of approximately 21 students. Looking over the enrollment projections moving, you know, 10 years out, this is probably the slightest decrease in students. When you're, when whoever's sitting in this chair this time next year will be giving you a very different picture because we're going to be looking at a much higher decrease in students. But I need to temper that because in the next line, you'll see that, you know, one of the phenomenon that we've seen is that as students go to magnet schools, collag schools, either Glass and Berry or Lyman, or the tech schools, we're finding that more and more of those students are coming back to Ram. From the beginning of this, this school year, room today, we've had 13 students return to Ram. So, you know, when we look at a decrease in enrollment, we also have to temper that with the return in enrollment we're seeing. And so, you know, my, my take on this would be that enrollment is staying low until the class is here. So you're not going to see any significant suggestions for, you know, reducing staff or, you know, resources because, again, based upon the needs coming out of the pandemic and the fact that our enrollment is staying pretty static, you know, I don't see that this is the year to move forward with that. Health insurance is currently budgeted as 0% increase. We'll let that sink in. So our health insurance, which is, you know, we're talking a million dollars item, 0% increase. And we're able to do that because we're self-insured. We have a consortium made up of three towns, the four school districts, A H M. And the self-insured consortium has done a fantastic job of managing the funds. And as a result, we're able to move forward without any increase in insurance costs, insurance spend. I even talked to a colleague today that was concerned because their district is looking at upwards to a 20% increase. In Ram speak, that would have been about $600,000. So this is a, this is definitely a good thing. Our bus contract, we're in year four, a five-year contract, so that's already contracted for, you don't need to add any additional. Our buses cover athletics, they cover, obviously bringing students to school, field trips, and our special transportation fees. Sure, absolutely.
I was referring to the habitary package for like test schools. Do you know the reasons why it takes like that?
A lot of, well, a lot of students tell us it wasn't what they expected. In some cases, they don't feel that they're getting instruction in all the areas that they feel are absolutely perfect. Or it's not instruction at the level that they have become accustomed to at the middle school, or they, or you serve a freshman. So obviously, our staff contracts, you know, our staffing is the major cost for any district. We just ratified and settled contracts with our teachers, our non-certified staff, and our nurses. Our administrators will be negotiating next year. Our teachers, the Ram teacher contract has historically been far below what other area schools have been able to pay. The Ram teacher contract has historically had many, many steps and do hard work over the last six to 10 years. They've been able to reduce the number of steps, they've been able to make it a little more competitive with other areas. I know our current board members know this because they ratified the contract, but for our new board members, the Ram teacher contract actually includes no general wage increase, but just teachers progressing up the steps, we have 13 steps in the contract. That really highlights how important it is for our teachers to be able to move up the step to afford a general wage increase. There is a one and a half percent general wage increase for the folks at the very top of the salary scale. Because Ram has so many, our teachers fall on the younger end of the spectrum, our step cost is much higher than our surrounding schools, where most of their teachers are at the top of the salary scale, hence the 4.3% increase. Our non-certified staff have, again, historically been far underpaid compared to our local districts. And in, in their contract, you know, they got a, I think, a minimal general wage increase of 2%, but we also added a hourly adjustment, wage adjustment. And looking to next year, it's a dollar an hour wage adjustment. So we purposely coordinated that with next year, and you'll see why in just a few seconds. Administrators and nurses both are looking at a 2.5% increase. Our principal and interest payments for the middle school and high school buildings were coming to the tail end of our payments for these buildings. There'll be a reduction of $1.4 million in what we're paying this year compared to what we're going to be paying next year. That doesn't mean that I'm going to be bringing you a budget that's $1.4 million less than this year's budget because you will have things like salary increases, which will counter that to some degree. We coordinated the dollar wage adjustment for our non-certified staff with next year, knowing that we also had that savings. But the operating budget though, my goal is to bring you a budget that comes in with a negative percent, so it would be less than 0%. That's our goal as we're developing that. And we're able to do that with the reduction in principal, that's obviously huge. But you're going to see that some of our more significant areas are actually coming in less than what we were expecting for last year. So that's, that's our goal moving forward with the operating budget. Capital budget. This is where things get complicated. The capital budget that was approved for this year, that we're sitting in right now, The Board of Ed Facility Subcommittee has identified $1.1 million in identified capital needs. Please don't misunderstand me. I'm not suggesting that we need to fund a $1.1 million capital budget. I'm just simply saying, these are the needs that have been identified for that. Obviously, part of the budget process is to determine as a board, which of those needs will actually get funded. So the first thing, number one, we need to do is prioritize the capital items and fund them with the 22, 23 capital budget. Bottom line is, board's going to have to decide what are you comfortable with moving forward, whether it be something close to $299,000, or whether it's something closer to $400,000, I don't know, something a little better. Number two, one of the options that we'll have is to reduce any increase in the capital budget by transfer, by transferring surplus 21, 22 funds, funds from the current budget to cover some of the capital expenses. So as we go through tonight's finances and as you and I engage in discussions moving forward through the budget process, we believe that there are surpluses in our current budget that would be available for the board to offset some of the costs of extras. What are the reasons? Yep, sorry, Doug.
I was going to give a couple of quick questions here.
Sure.
So one of the things that happened in the past, and it was actually pre-B, just for everybody else's, kind of to bring up this feed if you're new to the board, there's, you know, Facilities Committee and specifically a few key people, previous board members, Joe and Rob, did a pretty great job along with the Facilities Director and Scott in organizing that capital budget, trying to prioritize things in the years that we, you know, projected they would likely be necessary, getting some, you know, at least projected figures behind what those would cost, in an attempt to kind of logically address them and not knock them down in order so that we stayed somewhat ahead of the capital, you know, and we didn't find ourselves in a problem. I think one of the things that went along with that was that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but I think at one point it was almost like a board field trip, to basically go through that list and actually go and see what the issues are and give you a feel for what, you know, what all is involved, how, to what degree do they need, you know, work in, how much would that cost, how long can we wait on it, the impact of not doing them things of that nature, which is all pretty key information, I think, for us to make, certainly for me to be able to have an opinion, and then also for the Facilities Director to give us, you know, kind of his subject matter expertise on, and his recommendations on that. Is that something that we could do again soon for, certainly for myself and any other board members that would like to participate?
Absolutely, Mike. Yep, it's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we, you know, we'll work on trying to figure out a date, the time, and the place that works for everybody who's, who's able to and wants to participate in that, but I definitely think that would help as we get into the part where we have to start discussing or making hard decisions on this stuff. What, what, or where are you voting on?
May I add to that, Mike?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I know in Marlborough, for instance, which is where I'm from, there's huge support for facilities and capital. And it's because of the work that all of them, the facilities, the board, and everybody did, and Rich Jacobson was also one of the people, key people who was originally on that. So if we could also invite the community, it goes a long, long way, and we do then really have their support.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. Is there any reason we couldn't do that, Scott?
No, absolutely, that'd be fine. Yeah, and I think we have to add that last year, as we developed our capital budget, the Ram Board decided to give quite a bit of money back to the three towns, it was almost $800,000 given back. And, you know, our dialogue with the towns was, you know, help us out in a time of need. And at the time, we didn't know where the economy was headed towards. And then, you know, we'll be happy to work with you next year in terms of, you know, what our needs may be moving forward.
May I, may I piggyback on that, too?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Dave.
So, um, Scott and everybody who was on the border who was listening, and Marlborough especially made that leap because the debt burden for them was greater and would be reduced this year. And, and we didn't have those conversations, and, um, they, they promised us that they would be, um, you know, supporting facilities, they understand how important it is, and we plan to certainly, you know, work together. And, um, we all took notes from those meetings and tried to make sure that that can happen, that we can all collaborate to support our capital projects to the best, um, possible amount we can this year.
Right.
So, so, so this slide, all I'm talking about is the amount that we'll be budgeting for capital projects in twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay, so, so keep that one part of your grid. The next slide talks about capital with a different set of funds. So we have two capital funds, a capital non-recurring balance or a capital improvement plan. The capital non-recurring balance includes money from, from leftover from projects that maybe came in under budget or money from projects that, for whatever reason, might not have been completed. And so that money carries over from one year into the next. It must stay in capital or it doesn't, you can't take it out and decide to do something other than use it, um, to fund capital. Right now, we have fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars in our capital non-recurring budget. So that's money that's, that's available for capital projects. We also have money left over in the capital improvement plan from two thousand, twenty, twenty-one, you know, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So the board has some money available, and, and, you know, the, the reason why the hundred and eight thousand is such a large number is that some of these projects included competition field drainage, some projects on the baseball field that were essentially put on hold while we pursued the turf projects. And obviously, the turf field project wasn't successful. So now, you know, the assumption is we'll go back and reconsider, you know, how to use that money to support, um, the athletic and competition fields. In addition to that, you have number three, which are surplus funds from the twenty-twenty-one operating. State law allows a regional board of education to, to earmark money equivalent to two percent of our operating budget into capital projects from surplus funds. That would translate, that translates to about six hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to have a surplus funds, we're going to have capital improvement on balance, and the other capital on current on balance. This isn't money that you're going to be budgeting for and asking the taxpayers to fund. This is going to be, you know, surplus funds that are already in existence that can only be used for capital projects. Surplus from twenty-twenty-one, you can give it back to the towns. Do a lot of things with it for the next slide area. So you could take, you could take that money, you, you could, you know, we're, we're looking at a substantial amount of money there. You know, you could use it to, um, cover much of the capital needs and earmarking remaining funds for future projects. I wouldn't advise doing that, I put it there because that is an option. I think that you have to be careful in terms of, of, of using surplus money to cover capital funds because when you don't have surplus funds and you go back to budget your capital funds, now you're adding a two, three hundred percent increase on it and, and it's not going to fly. You know, I think it's healthy to keep a, a, you know, a, a capital budget moving forward each year. One of the options you could use this for would be to complete most, if not all, of the improvements on the competition field. If the voters held us in no uncertain terms that it weren't going to support the, the, um, artificial turf, we could use this money, you could address the drainage issues on the field. I'm not suggesting you do that by putting artificial turf in the, it's, it's upsetting, but you could, you know, leave our grass field in place, address the drainage issues, the track will need replacing, and, you know, it's been a goal to add lights to the field. You know, that, that's a project that we could very likely get done with the surplus funds and the capital, non-recurring capital funds in existence. So as I said, it's the capital that's going to be, I think, the most challenging in terms of where do we put it all and, and what's the best use of those funds. I'm going to ask, I'll hold a pretty questions that you might have because I'm going to move away from capital after this slide. It's a lot of work.
Are we, uh, looking down the road, are there large, uh, capital needs to, to, to the realm of my thumb, for example?
Great question. So, yes, the answer is yes. So Eric's asking the question, like, you know, are, are there capital projects that might be so expensive that you simply can't simply throw them into a two to three, four hundred thousand dollar, you know, capital budget? We have, um, replacement of the roof, which is going to be coming up in the next three years, and that's two foot back.
Is that right?
That's a million. You've got boilers that will, will need to be replaced, and chillers that will need to be replaced. These are big cost items. So one of the things that you could use some of this money for is to, you can carry it over in capital non-recurring funds and offset any money that eventually we need to go bottom for. And when I present the budget, too, you know, we'll, we'll outline, like, our current interest and principal payments for this building, and you'll see where they, when they disappear, and I think that'll help the board plan for any future bottom that you might be looking to do. Because, you know, as I said, it drops one point four million dollars coming into next year. It'll remain flat for a year, and then it takes another drop, maybe about six hundred thousand, maybe. And then it stays flat for a few years, and then eventually goes away in passing for the second. So that'll be part of our plan as well. One of the, um, areas that, you know, often, and we spend a lot of time on is, is special ed funding and the, the cost of our education, our special education services. Some of the areas that will impact our thinking about budgeting, um, the, um, special ed, our special ed program is picking up in, in, in increase in magnet school tuition for students who are, you know, some of our special needs students. The good news in this area is that it's being transferred, so rather than a general budget, it's being paid out of special ed budget. So it's not really representative of a significant increase, more of a transfer of, um, where funding is coming from. In terms of some of the private tuition and professional services that we, at this point, are aware of, we have three students attending out-of-district programs that will be moving into more costly programs next year. We have an incoming seventh grader who is already in and out of district programming, and we anticipate will have to give up that cost. We have three students who are currently at RAM, who will be post-graduates and move into transition programs. For our special need programming, there are students that, that we, that continue in our programming up to age twenty-two. And for some of those students, it's no longer appropriate to be educated from here in the building, so they, um, we will, and they will enter to, uh, postgraduate and transition programs. Having said that, seventh students will have reached maximum age for next year, so there'll be seven students that will age out of our special ed program. We also anticipate we're going to see a decrease in our private tuition costs, a decrease in our transportation costs, and our decrease in outside assessment costs. So, you know, I think the overall, um, play for special education is that we, there, there's a lot of factors bringing it down.
Scott, are those decreases proven just by having fewer participants, or is there something else driving those decreases?
Mike, I, I think, I'm going to ask you to hold that question for the January meeting. I think I'd rather Christine Hartley answer that question, I'm not sure I can answer that off the top of my head.
Okay, no problem.
And so, so this, this next page, what typically you see here are, here are the new programs that we're offering, that we're asking the board to fund. And quite frankly, I'm not proposing any new program because I think that we have an ongoing challenge of educating our students out of the pandemic that I think we, we need to keep our eye on the prize, keep ourselves focused on the program that we currently have in place and making sure that our teachers have what they need to, um, successfully move our students forward without adding additional program at this time. Having said that, if you look at the middle column, um, that represents, um, some middle school and high school funding that is currently being covered by grants that were made available to us in response to the pandemic. In the middle school, um, we added seven academic labs. We're not talking a lot of money here, this, this, these aren't full-time positions in academic labs, about a thousand dollars a pop. And what it does is it allows us to provide students with a more structured, um, study environment so we can provide greater support to students who may have greater need than other students. We added an extra day for planning for our team leaders in the summer, specifically to plan around programs to support student emotional health. We added a team leader at the middle school for our school, our school counseling program, again, to emphasize and to promote, um, student emotional health. At the high school, we also added an additional academic lab to provide targeted support to students in need. We added a point six seven, which is a little more than a half-time, nurses administrative assistant. You can imagine that our nurse's office is absolutely rocking and rolling at this point between contact tracing, between the number of students who just, you know, on any given day show up. But in terms of response to the pandemic, we are still in the throes of, of really a lot more cutting out of the nurse's office. An additional paraprofessional to support, um, some of our special education students. We had two stutter call monitors. Because we are taking our teachers out of the traditional duty schedule because we are asking them to provide more, um, focused support for some of our students, we didn't have enough teachers to man our stables. And so we had to add, we had to add some additional study hall monitors. And we added a point four PE and health position. I mentioned earlier that, um, there's a greater call for, uh, electives, and we found that wellness, PE, and health were areas that kids were contracted to, and so we added some, um, additional sections. What I'll be proposing we do going into twenty-two, twenty-three is, because the grants will run out on these, is to move those into the operating. Again, it's not a lot of money in a thirty million dollar budget, but I think it's important to talk about some of the things that we are doing to help, you know, to support our students. On the last page, um, these are actually, um, reductions. We reduced an English teacher in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, but used grant funding to keep that position moving forward. We felt, again, with the pandemic on us, that English was in particular an area that we really wanted to, um, support foster small classes and to meet our students' needs. We, we are not proposing to continue this position in the operating budget, so this would be a position that would sunset when we ended the grant. And, um, a reduction, um, would be from our career and technical education department of early childhood. This is a, um, program that we run in conjunction with our preschool program that essentially provides, uh, UConn level course, uh, early childhood development. Quite frankly, we'd love to continue to offer this program, we simply cannot find a teacher. And we've had to sunset it because there's no program in the state that offers certification of family consumer science, and this, the teachers simply don't exist in this area. So, um, you know, I think you can, you can see the, the increase in the PE wellness health, the point four there as picking up the slack on the point four that reduced in this program. So, so there are some reductions, and then obviously balance consumption issues as well. So I think the overall message I, I have for you is our goal is to, um, bring in a less than zero percent increase on our, um, operating budget. It's not because we're removing things that need to be there, it's because we have some opportunities for savings with some of the other elements in the budget. And, and I think we're all going to be rolling up our sleeves and working really hard on figuring out what capital items really need to be supported, which ones of those are we going to support with a, with our capital budget that we go to the town for proof for, and which items are we going to use, some of our surplus funds and, um, capital non-recurring funds to support. So a glimpse of things to come. Can I be, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for that, thanks for bringing it over to me, and, sorry, your level, but I think it gives us a peek. And again, I'll make copies of this, I'll, I'll share a copy with everyone tonight, and it'll also be posted on the RAM website. People will have access to it.
Scott, one other question, that, that was a very high overview, and I think the only other thing I would ask, is that the, the capital plan that, um, that we've been operating off of, kind of that projection, is that something that we can share across the board as well? Because I think if you're earlier, somebody has the opportunity to look at it and get familiar with it, probably the better people can start to kind of wrap their mind around with, uh, what we're really talking about when it comes to the capital.
Absolutely, yep, yep, and, and what we'll do, Mike, is we'll kind of color code it, too, because, you know, we, I think, emphasize some of the areas, some projects that we really feel just have to get done, and others that we have more choice in terms of whether we do it this year or we put it off to another year. So, yep, we can certainly make that happen.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions about that?
In the past, um, the special ed budget has kind of been a moving target. Just, you know, people moving out, people moving in, that's going to happen even during the year. Is that, uh, has the code been cracked on that, or is that something that's just an ongoing problem?
That's a great question, and I could easily answer that one, I don't need to give it to the special ed department for that, it's an ongoing challenge. Yeah, yeah, definitely. Because you never, you just never know, you never know, um, you know, who's moving into the town, who's moving out. And, you know, what challenges our current students may, you know, be facing that require, um, some programming that we, that they don't need at this time, maybe next year.
And the number can be significant?
Yes, yeah. I, I think we've done a much, much better job of being predictive. And so I think this, the shift is, is less dramatic than, than has been in the past.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay. All right. Uh, review and possible action regarding C I A C winter sports mass guidelines, specifically the Ellington Board of Education letter to Connecticut Department of Public Health Commissioner, which is in closure eleven point four.
Mike, I could kind of introduce and, and get the discussion going. So, you know, the, the issue at hand here is the C I C guidance for winter sports. And I think the guidance has put folks on any, on all sides of this issue at, at odds with even what their, their typical thinking might be. And I, I really have And I, I really have two comments regarding the guidance that we've been, that we've received for winter sports. As a school, the last thing that we want to do is single out a group of students in any way, particularly in a public court. By allowing vaccinated students to take masks off during competitions, but requiring unvaccinated students to continue to wear masks, it, it quite frankly does just that. And, you know, that, that really, I think, goes against what we try to do for our students and that's providing a safe, welcoming environment where you, you're not forced to put anything that you don't want to put out there at the front. There you go. The, the other piece of this is, you know, you, you almost want to turn off the news because, you know, certainly the, you know, where COVID is going is, is, is a moving target. And, you know, the Omicron variant is much more contagious than the current variants. I think the last thing that we want to do is put our students in a situation where they may be exposed to a more contagious variant. Our goal is to try to keep all of our students in school, if at all possible. And, you know, I, I worry that if we're putting, you know, we, we know that there's enough crossover in infection rates that you can't simply trust the fact that you're vaccinated and therefore you're not going to have a breakable infection because you may very well have a breakable infection. You may be asymptomatic. And by allowing some students to take off their masks, particularly, you know, while you're playing hard with students that may not be vaccinated, it just doesn't seem to make sense from any, our efforts to keep all of our students healthy and continue playing in our athletic programs and attending the school. So Dan Trudeau, our athletic director, Mike Suessi, Penny Driscoll and I, you know, had many conversations on this. And, you know, our strong feeling is that, um, you know, as I said earlier in the night, we had two decisions to make as far as COVID mitigation efforts. Either accept screen and stay or not, and we chose to accept it because that would allow us to keep more kids at school. And we have a choice of whether to allow our students to, our vaccinated students, remove their masks during competition. And, you know, we all feel very strongly that that's not the right way to go. It doesn't, doesn't serve our students. And it probably doesn't enhance the health of everyone who's really at this point. So, um, so going into this discussion, I think I can tell you that, that we in no way, shape or form would advocate that we, we move forward with that particular part of the guidance in place. I think the, the other question is, um, I know you have the Ellington letter and I think it's the Vernon letter. You know, some districts are taking kind of that next step because, because we do have a choice here. We can just say, and quite frankly, we're saying, no, we're not going to do this. We want to keep our, our athletes all masked up. You know, I think, you know, one of the questions is, does the board want to take any additional steps in terms of, um, you know, providing support in order?
Scott, can I just, sure, I'm sorry. So are we, I think what I want to make sure from, I'm hearing what you're saying is that from, from the administrative perspective, enforcing the portion or allowing the portion of the guidance where vaccinated athletes are allowed to unmask is not something you guys are advocating or supporting at this point?
Correct.
So I guess, so, so Mike, I, I, I know there's kind of two separate issues. Is that really frankly a discussion point where we as a board need to weigh in on that? And, and secondly, is there obviously a discussion point about whether or not we take an active role in supporting or not supporting the, the, uh, the efforts of the Ellington board in their push to the public health commissioner?
Well, yeah, correct on both fronts. I, you know, I think it's, you know, because we have a choice in this way, I think it's important that, that, you know, the board has the opportunity to weigh in. And obviously, if we're all in agreement, we move forward without any issues. You know, I think, Mike, we, you know, the board has been very generous in allowing us to kind of manage the mitigation efforts. Obviously with making sure that the board is praised every step of the way. So I'm not sure if that needs a, a board motion. The board is certainly welcome to do that. But, you know, even without a board motion, that's the direction that we do move forward at the end of this week. I think then, and you're correct, Mike, on the other one, that's really a poor decision if you wanted to chime in or whether we support it or play out that way.
I'd really like to know what everybody thinks individually about the, the first portion of that. For or against or any concerns or issues? I think it's important that, uh, that as a board, we kind of voice our thoughts on that and concerns because I think it may be different based on who we kind of represent in the towns and people that have reached out to us individually. I don't, I think it's worth taking the time just to make sure that we give it, give it a full discussion so that, uh, at, at a minimum that we all walk away feeling like we're in agreement and we're supporting the administrative, the administration or we're giving them opposite, you know, directions, one of the two.
If I could speak, this is Mike Sharon from Cleveland. When this policy was brought to my attention, I scratched my head. I didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me regarding what seemed like blatant discrimination against our kids. Whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated is no business of anyone but their families. That's really what it comes down to. They shouldn't be pressured by their peers, by anyone else in that school environment. So, um, I appreciate the administration's perspective. But I think that at this time, I think what makes the most sense is to go forward with the plan of the administration and identify, which is to eliminate the option for the vaccinated students to remove their masks. I know that a lot of people are probably going to be upset about that, but I don't think right now is the time to fight that battle. I think that opportunity will come in the future. And it doesn't have to be that. I think it has, it's, it's a discussion that we all engage on. We listen to the community, the parents, the students, the administration, our other members of the board to make the right decisions as far as how we proceed. So my opinion, I would say that we endorse the, the actions that, that the administration is proposing. Now, the second half of that discussion with regard to the Ellington letter that they sent to the Department of Public Health and the C I A C, well, I think it's primarily a D P H. I wholeheartedly believe that our Board of Education should take an active stance in standing up for our kids and trying to right this wrong by showing our solidarity, not only with Ellington, but with the Vernon public school systems as well. I, I applaud them for the move that they've made, standing up for what they think is right, and I think that we should join that battle.
Leaving that, leaving that, leaving up for that discussion, Mike? Anybody else?
Yeah. And you know, this is Carrie Fralino. I agree with what was, that I, when I first read this letter, I was very upset because to me that's clear discrimination. And well, the debate on whether continuing that or unmask is there again, may not be the point. I just think it's very important that we stand with the administration and don't allow the masks of vaccinated students to be removed if the unvaccinated students cannot. And to, to add to that, I'd also like to mention, if we look at the COVID numbers now, many vaccinated people have COVID. And so to me, the whole thing doesn't really sound. And again, in agreement with Mike, I think we should support the Ellington letters and let our government know that it's just not really an acceptable policy. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Appreciate that.
Mike, this is Jessica. I, I agree with you and the other Mike and then also with Carrie for exact same reasons that we're, we're all discussing on both accounts. Absolutely supporting.
Great. Anybody else? Please go ahead, Scott. Any, any terms or orders?
This is maybe peripheral or not. Is there a difference between kids being inside and outside?
Of the, of the building? Well, remember we're looking at winter sports? So, um, essentially the ability to, the, the guidance that allows for vaccinated students to remove masks is only during competition. So that'd be basketball, cheerleading. And it would only take place inside. So, um, you know, if the indoor track and, and Dan, please chime in if I'm, if I'm not correct here, but like indoor track is likely the only sport that on a warmish day may actually go outside. And if, if they're running, you know, individually, then I imagine they'd be able to take their masks off. But for winter sports, you know, wrestling, basketball, cheerleading, dance, you know, we're really looking at indoor activities.
So, just to clarify, so if kids have been practicing outside, they're spread out, vaccinated, or unvaccinated, they could remove their masks. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm in agreement as well to not give it on record. And, and I think that we should absolutely advocate and write a letter into the state to show our, our support and, um, you know, our disdain, maybe a harsh word, but strong disagreement in any kind of discrimination against the next students. And again, Scott, just moving up the goal for the strategic plan, anything that works to not create a safe environment culture in school, we should, we should be seriously not advocating for it and, and, and actually advocating that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, um, this is Judy. Was that Lori just speaking?
It was me, yeah.
So, um, yeah, my, my thoughts were probably a lot, um, like, like all of yours and especially Lori, like yours, that's why I asked that. You know, um, Jess sent me an article that I sent to Scott about where some of her kids are going to college, W P I, and just sadly some suicides and things. And we know that there are more mental health issues and challenges out there. And we don't fully have figured out what is triggering kids, but certainly making them feel different by some having masks on and some not and giving away their vaccine status. In my, in community and I agree, that's nobody's business and it's just pressure. Our kids, our family, I, I just don't think anybody needs it. So I agree with everyone so far.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other thoughts?
Yeah.
You can go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Mike. I also, I also support the administration's decision on the policy. I, I think that is a right way to go.
Anybody else? Well, I, I, I think I, I agree with all the, the statements that were made. I, I agree that, uh, I, I can't see anything constructive about signaling the kids out or and frankly, I think from the Department of Public Health perspective, when we get that part of that pushback letter or, or letter of support, I, I think one of the things that we probably ought to include in there is I, I have to believe that the, I don't know the Department of Public Health Commissioner, I'm gonna assume he or she is a, a good person trying to do the right thing. But I think one of the things that they failed in, in this policy was giving the administration, specifically people with Scott's position and, and Dan and Peggy and Mike's position, in, in the ability, pardon, I'm sorry, the ability to en, enforce that or implement that. I mean, in, in reality, again, forcing people to, um, have to expose a, a condition of their medical status by virtue of them not being able to take off their mask. How would we enforce that? You know, how would we hold our administrators and our staff to, to task and enforcing that? I mean, I think we'd be crossing all sorts of potentially HIPAA lines and it, it just seemed like a very unrealistic policy move from the outset. But, um, but one step further what you guys all voiced, I, I agree completely with what you're saying. So I, I guess from that perspective, I guess the only other question I would have, Scott, maybe you can shed some light on your thoughts on this. If when the board were to make the motion and to agree to provide a letter of support, what's, who, who should be drafting that? How should that process move forward?
So, we need a motion. And then I think the, um, probably the most obvious person would be the secretary for the board. I'm happy to do it. Who volunteered for the decision. And, and I think probably Mike, you and I could put our heads together and develop a letter. And then quite frankly, I would, I would need to do just a little research to find out how we would get that letter to a letter that the entire board supports. Whether we would need to get a quick meeting to get everyone together remotely or whether we would just be able to share it and get feedback. Not having done this before, I think we just need to look into what the logistics of that is, but that's, that's easy enough. And I'm sure if something regardless of what the logistics are, we could get done in short order.
Well, so in that, in that light, I, I think based on what you said before, Scott, unless, unless anybody on the board feels struggling that we need to go through some sort of a motion to, um, to, uh, support the board's decision to get, I'm sorry, the administration's decision to continue to manage the, uh, the policies the way they are, which is by not enforcing that one section of the, of the masking guidelines. Um, I would, I would suggest that we could probably just continue to move on and, and, um, allow the administration to continue to manage that the way they have up until this point. Um, so does anybody have any, you know, strong feelings that we need to do a motion in that respect or, or not? Okay. Based on little feedback on that, that I think I'm gonna say that we, we're all in support of what the administration is doing at this point and leave that to your, uh, expertise to manage and, uh, as we go forward. And obviously things change or we need to revisit any portion of it because of whatever comes out in this new guidance specifically, then we can address that at that point. As far as the, uh, the letter of support and to the commissioner of the board of, uh, I'm sorry, the Commissioner of Public Health, uh, or the, I guess it's the Board of Education for Vernon and Ellington. Uh, can I, I would like to ask if there's a motion to support generating and delivering a letter of that nature?
Yes, uh, this is Carrie Fralino. I'd like to put a motion out there to support Ellington and Vernon with a letter.
Is there a second?
A second. Mike Sharon. Great.
Scott, can you go through the roll form one more time?
Absolutely. Judy?
Um, yes, with the, with the condition that I see it before it's that, that we have been in class.
Fair. That's very fair.
Absolutely, Judy, yeah.
We'll, we'll, we're re, re, restating that just so that we're on the record and having it right.
Sure. I, um, I would like for the board members to agree to it prior to it being set out after it dropped into review and agree to it.
Agreed. Scott, do you need to do anything else from Mike or will you be going?
Carrie, would you be willing to add that to your original motion?
Absolutely. I put a motion out there to support Ellington and Vernon by sending a letter of support. Five would be, because the board needs to approve the letter.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Mike, you're good. Yeah. Okay. Scott?
Okay, Judy, I'll come back to you.
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yes.
Lori? Mike Sharon?
Yes.
Mary? Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike Morris?
Yes.
Carrie? It passes. Motion passes.
Great. Okay, um, financials.
All right. Good evening. So in your packets, um, you'll have to see eleven point five A. It is the expenditure revenue report. So the report is based on, um, the expenditures through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So the report is based on the expenditures through November 30th, 2021. I'm projecting a net favorable position of $112,618. Some of this is realized to the tuition and magnet and LOAC programs that we've been invoiced for, didn't come in as high as we were intending. In addition, we've had some child rearing leaves that have saved us some money. The capital improvement fund, the air conditioning units have been approved to be ordered and to date, the supply chain issue is not affecting the delivery of these units. So we're still on schedule and very ready to install that into the locker room. The capital not recurring fund, the town of Hebron, if I can put it that way, the town of Hebron is working with the state of Connecticut to finalize and officially close out the DOT project. It's currently waiting to be audited and I think that's what the discussion basis is, making sure that everything has been made in for, given that mutation to the state for this audit. The pupil services department, which oversees our special ed students, their department through the PBTs works with to ensure that the students are placed in proper placement that helps manage and ensure that we're paying for the appropriate, and pay for appropriate classifications for those students and for their services, both for residential and non-residential programs. And that, anytime they have the PBTs, they update their purchases to ensure that they're either incoming with the correct funds, Lori, then we're increasing updates on that. Are there any questions that the board has on this map?
I have one question. Parking lot, are these the changes that we've seen occur over the past few years with regard to traffic patterns and such?
Any additional questions? So hearing none, could we go to 11.5B? That is the student activity report. So I took this opportunity to fill up the definition of student activity funds and I filled that into my memo. So student activity funds are part of the board's purview to ensure that the money is spent accurately or that I'm accounting for the funds correctly. But basically, any student activity fund is to support the extracurricular needs of the students. So it's supposed to benefit the student directly. So if the organization chooses to donate money so they can go to a fundraiser, so like student council, foster gap money, and then the crisis of labor leaders, food service program, animal shelter, those are appropriate expenditures for those types of funds. So Lori gets to see it, but the board doesn't necessarily get to tell the student how to do it. Are there any questions on student activity funds? So hearing none. 11.5C is the food service monthly sale and expenditure report. So as you're aware, during COVID, we went into a seamless summer operation and USDA has extended that into this school year. So that means the students get to eat their breakfast and lunch for free. We do charge for all of our indoor second meals. So if someone's really coming back and wants to eat a little bit more, we should have to collect for those meals. We also have increased our adult meal sales. So it's in the food contract that the marketing department over there has done the mail skating job and trying to develop a separate menu for the adults so that they can eat something that's a little bit more appealing for themselves, like a grilled cheese bread and pollo noodle. That's one. Something like that. Right. Yeah, really works good. But so yes, here in the food service area, we are experiencing some supply chain issues unfortunately. So the cafeteria staff does a wonderful job of trying to manage the menu based on what they receive. Unfortunately, our DOT program, which is the Department of Defense, gives us our fruits and vegetables. That's actually helping us a little bit more because we have a contract out to get our fruits and vegetables because they're able to supply us through the hard provision contract that we have. So are there any questions in regard to the food service? I was gonna say, if you look on the second page where you have the income statement, we're doing our best to mitigate the loss and we seem to be doing a good job. So hopefully through the end of the year, we'll see that we, hopefully we get to the black, that we seem to be doing a better job because we are getting a higher reimbursement rate since the meals are free. So that's a positive. Are there any questions on the food service programs? I just have a question.
The negative of the loss, I guess we had in over the summer?
Yep.
Is that a curative?
Um, so no, that's a direct, because in essence, we normally don't feed July and August, but it says during the season of summer, we did feed the door. We didn't have a direct revenue coming out of that time. That's why it's a bit hard.
Okay, only reimbursement.
Correct.
And our reimbursement rate being highest, is that good?
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
Just a fact of the matter.
Yep.
$112,618, that's a year's payment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. So if I'm reading this right, then Scott, can we move on to the committees reports?
That would be great.
Yes, but I think, Mike, I don't think we've had any committees that have met since our last board meeting, since we were in flux and, yeah, I don't think we've had any committees meet together.
Okay.
Although Judy might have had, Judy, is there any East Town or Dave?
You know, I only got, I think it's, have been sent to everybody from CADE and East Town is tomorrow again, so no, but thank you.
So maybe just a quick second, Judy really kind of turned me on to this when I first came into the board and I took advantage of the couple opportunities that I could while I was still in Hebron and not on active duty, was to go participate in some of the CADE meetings. And Judy, maybe could you just talk for a quick second about what CADE is and how it works?
Yes, absolutely. So it's the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education and it really is to support boards of education. And they have lawyers there, policy people, because everything we do is around policy really. They advise us, they do workshops, and it's a very good, I think, professional organization and they have more and more meetings now that are virtual. So you can find them and they're low to no cost usually. And if there's something that would be really beneficial to you as a RAM board member, you know, and if it's a low cost kind of thing, it's supportive through the budget because we want board of ed members to be doing the right work, the appropriate work, which is increasing student engagement due to the achievement. Oh, actually, that's a good point, Mike, that, yeah, so many new members will need to make sure that everybody gets really subscribed to make sure that they get on. So I will follow up, I'll break myself a note on that. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. I, like I said, I went through a couple of them. I thought they were super helpful for somebody new to the board to understand not only what are the challenges that we're facing, but it was really interesting to hear other administrators and other board members talking about the things that other school systems within the state are experiencing and just give their, kind of also to get some best practices, recommendations and advice. And really, this was really a great opportunity. And then we also have had, there was some folks at the state level giving some feedback on kind of directions. And I happened to go during one that was sort of middle of COVID and, you know, the unique aspects of that and it was just, it was really interesting. So, you know, it's more donated time. So, you know, if you have it and you're willing, that would be great. If you're not, that's okay too. But just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about it and if you had the opportunity, you wanted to go. I think if you want to go, if I remember right, I want to say, I messaged Scott and Scott connected me. I'm not sure if it was Penny or somebody from Penny's staff, somebody helped me get signed up to go. So if you want to go, I can just communicate it to Scott that she wants to and we'll figure out how to get you signed up.
Yep, we'll hook you up. And we also, on January 11th, we have a CADE board of ed workshop. So that you'll get a chance to work with some of the folks from CADE that evening.
And I think that's gonna be remote or there'll be a remote option.
Yes, correct, yep. And more information will come probably that week we get back, that first week in January will provide more information about what that's gonna look like.
Do you think it'll tie up that right now?
We do, I think it's six to eight.
Okay, nothing else?
Mike, if I could say on the subcommittees, if, you know, if you have interest in serving them on the subcommittees, if you could email Mike and let him know, Mike, then, you know, that gives you a chance to balance each of the committees out. And, you know, essentially, the facilities subcommittee is for the most part looking at the capital budget. It looks at the facility's needs, the big ticket items that may be necessary to keep the building in tip-top shape. Also looks at athletic fields and all the work that goes into maintaining those. The finance subcommittee often, well, they get a preview of what Eva's gonna present at this meeting. It's gonna be particularly useful for us as we go through the budget process just to get some, gives us a chance to get some quicker feedback than waiting maybe for the regular board meeting. Negotiations is really done on an as-mean basis. As I said, we completed negotiations for three of our bargaining units and the next negotiations won't be taking place until next year. The policy committee, we often will bring policies to the subcommittee to consider and, you know, we work with Shippin and Goodwin, our attorneys, to, they'll let us know which of our policies may apply or maybe update when we need to update. Eva often with her organization will be made aware of policies that we need to add or update. So that's really a policy-focused discussion. In the program, the subcommittee looks at, you know, school programs and activities. So program subcommittee has a meeting coming up in January and one of the things we're gonna talk about is high school midterms and finals. So those are the types of things we want to engage the board in discussions. Just to give you an idea of the types of things.
So a couple of things with that, might as well just kind of tackle this too, I think. Thanks, Scott, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think one of the things that, I think I was gonna ask you offline, to make sure I was okay with some of those things, so I'm glad you brought it up. We can just do it now. I think the couple of things that I would just ask, like Scott said, please message me, email me, whatever, call me, whatever is the best convenient for you to communicate with me about your, any specific desires that you have to work on a particular committee and/or and on top of that, any particular committees you don't really feel like you should or want to work on. And one other thing I would ask is the veterans on the board, to the extent that you're willing or able to maybe stick around on the boards that you've been sort of engaged in and leaving, at least temporarily, to maybe make sure that we continue to keep those subcommittees moving in kind of the direction that we've been going in it. And, you know, if for some reason you don't feel like you want to stay there, at least hand it off so that there's some continuity to it. That would be fantastic. But we can certainly let me know your feelings on that. And then if there's any concerns or we don't have enough folks participating on one particular committee, I'll certainly reach out to a few and see if you'd be willing to reconsider. We'll just try to work it out that way. I really feel like if you want to be on it, then we'll get a better product. And if you don't want to be on it, that kind of thing. So I'll communicate more once I hear back from everybody about, you know, where you feel like you fit in best on that. So one other thing I wanted to share that was kind of new to me that I thought I would just throw out there and make sure that at least from, you know, from my perspective, everybody understands my thoughts on it, is that I think in the past, there was an history of a couple of boards ago or so where, and I don't know how far back this goes and this really doesn't really matter that much, but there was definitely points where it was maybe complicated to get things done or move things forward. A lot of, I don't want to call it mistrust, but not necessarily accepting some of the work that the subcommittees put in. And so subsequent boards tried to remedy that by, you know, really taking a step back and saying, hey, look, we have all these volunteers working on these subcommittees. They're putting a lot of, you know, volunteer time and energy. They're good people, trying to do the right things. And they're trying to bring forward the best product that they can for the board to act on. And obviously, you know, that's not just in a vacuum. That's with folks like Scott, his staff, trying to put in the subcommittee expertise where necessary. On all, but maybe too far to the other side of the pendulum where, you know, there was an expectation not to sharpshooter or question that those products too much either. And I think what all I would just advise or recommend to the group at large is that we do take that understanding away that, again, everybody's putting in their time and energy to these facility subcommittees, they're gonna bring products forward, whether it's from the negotiations with the staff or the teachers' unions or it's, you know, on particular cap, capital projects or policies that we develop, you know, understanding that they really dug in and put the time and energy into it, but I just would never want anybody to feel like as they come into a meeting where we're gonna discuss those things, that there's in any way, shape or form a rubber stamp expected on that. You know, that your full opportunity to ask as many questions as you need, that you feel you need to ask in order to make the best decision and vote that you feel you need, you know, clearly to represent not only your own individual communities, but the RAM community in general and the staff. And like I said, I just want to make sure that we don't swing all the way too far to that pedal, maybe meet in the middle where we accept what everybody brings forward and understand that it's coming from a good place. But that is a board, we definitely need to have some healthy debate on it and hopefully we'll come to the best decisions based on all that hard work and then the discussions that follow. So if there's any, you know, any thoughts or questions or concerns on that, I'd certainly open it up for anybody to weigh in.
Yeah, I, this is Judy, I'd love to weigh in on that. I agree, I like how you framed that. I would suggest then that people really look at the subcommittees, that they might care more about or want those questions and try to volunteer for those. And if you want to ask any of us offline, you know, what they really delve into and get into, you know, that would be fine. I know I was always very, someone who would really question negotiations when I wasn't on it. And so I joined that committee. And it's just a way to have all of the information and get that satisfied. See, that's just another piece, you know, if you're really a policy wonk, join policy or volunteer for that. It's a lot of, lot of work, but it's great work and important work. And I think as our chair said, it's where a lot of the RAM work gets done, is in the committees.
Okay, Lori?
If I could just ask a clarifying question. If we're already on the subcommittees and we're happy to continue there, do we still, should we still contact you just to confirm it or?
Yeah, I would love if you could do that. I just want to make sure I understand where everybody's coming from and what they want to do and then we'll try to, I don't have any personal, you know, desire to move anybody that doesn't want to move. And I think it's valuable to have people that have been on those committees still there, like I said, for the continuity piece, so I can't see a reason why we'd need to. All right? Okay. Scott, anything else you can think of, the subcommittees we need to talk about?
No, I think, I think that's it. I think, you know, probably once, you know, we have the committee set, probably the first committee that I'm gonna wanna schedule is kind of a special meeting for is facilities. Because there is a facilities meeting, but unfortunately it's scheduled for January 11th, which is the CADE workshop. So I'm gonna need to find another date that week or the following week so we can, that subcommittee can help us inform the development of our proposed capital.
Hey, I'm sorry, one other thing, one other note, Scott, I think maybe, and this is more a question. I think we lay out the schedule for the meetings, but at the point where the subcommittee determines that they need additional time or additional meetings, and I think, just to be clear, you know, one of the things that require- the things, the requirements is to make sure that we publicize when these meetings are going to occur and that we give notice to the public and it's, it's done, you know, completely, completely above board so that we are, you know, we're meeting as a group formally. Just in, in that circumstance, then we would come back and ask as a group to say, hey, can we schedule additional meetings with the motion of approving those meetings, right?
Absolutely. And, and we're obligated to require to host our meeting agendas at least 24 hours in advance. And, you know, we have to work into that, the hours of the town hall. So I believe it's in over, was it noon on Fridays?
Yeah, it was not open.
Oh, then open on Fridays. So it was on open on Fridays. So like, if somebody called me, you know, Friday morning and said, hey, I want to schedule a subcommittee meeting for Monday night, we couldn't do it because we couldn't post the agenda in Andover in time. So we, you know, that's all we're working. But you're exactly right. Like we have to post the agendas. And, you know, for any of these meetings that we're talking about, each meeting has to have an agenda. And obviously, that's what we're limited to talking about and discussing. So if any member of the public knows exactly what we're talking about, so if they would like to participate in that, they can join us for that.
Yeah. And so, and I think the only, I guess to capitalize on that, that discussion looks at rumors, that any of the, you know, any of the, the discussions, the work, all that kind of thing needs to be done in the format of, of the, the committee meetings. Right? We need to, in order, in order to make sure that it's a public event and that we've scheduled it, we followed, applied with all the rules. So it's somewhat of a discipline thing on ours, on ourselves. I, I, I know that a former board member was Rob Shattle. Rob and I are friends. You know, inevitably we run into each other. It was a discipline item for us to just make sure that we didn't dive into anything that was inappropriate from, from board member perspective. So just sharing that with you too, that, that at any point that you're going to have discussions that are relevant to the, the, the business of the board, whether it's facilities, subcommittee or subcommittees or the actual board. Those are the things that we do have to follow the rules and make sure that we're applying.
Right. Well said.
All right. If there's nothing else, then I'd open it back up for a public comment. And Scott, do we need to reread the, the notice or?
You know, I don't think we, we don't, I don't believe we have anybody here.
Is there anybody online here?
Nope. Anyone online?
All right. Have you heard nothing? Have you heard nothing? Then I'll assume the public comment is closed. And then informational items, specifically 14.1, the calendar event of events, which would be the middle school enclosure 14.1A. Is there anything you wanted to talk about that specific stuff?
No, this, these are really informational items, Mike. So we don't typically discuss them. We're happy to if anyone has any questions, but the calendar events and the discipline reports are really provided for each month.
Okay.
Yeah, just as information.
Okay. Well then, is there anything else that, any questions, comments, concern before we make a motion to adjourn? All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that one.
All right. We need to go through a roll call or can we just do a?
You can do a, you can do an I, an A, or a V. I, I will say before you take the vote, Mike, as your first meeting as a chair, you're only three minutes off from the projected end time of the meeting. So you're off to a good start. Definitely.
All right. Love it. Love it. All right. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. The motion to adjourn, with all the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Anything else? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Have a good holiday. Merry Christmas.
And holiday.